Great, welcome everyone. It's Monday, December ninth, twenty twenty four. It's time for our regular scheduled city council meetings. Ask first certified meeting notice.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho code seven four dash two zero four.
For call roll please.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Rasmussen.
Here.
Thank you. Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
The pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item D is changed. Item D is changes to the agenda, council. We missed canceling our second meeting this month, which is two days before Christmas. So I'd like to add an action item, uh, which would be, uh, canceling the December, is it twenty third?
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
It is December twenty third, twenty twenty four council meeting, uh, and we can just, uh, uh, put that under, uh, special business.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to add an item to the agenda under special business cancellation of the December twenty third council, uh, meeting.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to add that to any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to pull items five and six out of the consent agenda for want of a date certain.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to move items five and six on the consent agenda to the, to the regular, uh, meeting we can. Where do I want?
Let's put it in F, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, put it in F, okay. That'll be F, that'll be F two and three. Thank you. Okay.
And with that, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I would second.
Got a motion second to prove the consent agenda as amended. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do you any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Okay, with that done, the next item, uh, on our agenda is our amended consent agenda.
All right, Mr. Mayor, um, let's start with the, um, December twenty third meeting, um, council members, that's obviously a couple of days before Christmas.
We, no, we still got some items on the consent agenda that are remaining. So I need to approve those amendments and the ratification. So we pulled two things off the consent agenda. So we had, still have on the consent agenda items, one, two, three, four, and seven.
Effective as amended.
Yeah, I believe we approved that.
You approved it. Oh, you approved the consent.
As amended, yeah.
Okay, where was I? No comments from the. Okay, uh, I'm sorry, uh.
So I think we're going to be at F one.
Okay.
For, um, the cancellation of the December twenty twenty third council meeting.
Okay.
And I move that we do that.
Okay.
I would second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two, uh, this is a continuance of the third reading of ordinance ten fifty one dash twenty four. Uh, the request from staff, uh, is to, uh, move this, uh, to the first meeting in February. I don't know what that date is. This is the one that we are waiting for a Supreme Court decision, uh, on a case from another city that could impact this particular ordinance revision.
Be February tenth, Mr. Mayor.
February tenth. So if we don't have a decision, February tenth, uh, we'll be moving it again. Eventually they'll make a decision. Okay, um, motion I'm requesting is to move it to a date certain of February tenth, twenty twenty five.
I so moved.
Okay.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number six, this is also a continuance of the third reading of ordinance ten fifty four dash twenty four. This is, uh, out of title two. Uh, we need to make some corrections on the language in this one, uh, and would ask that, uh, we continue this one to January thirteenth, twenty twenty five.
I so moved. Second that one.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, any opposed? Motion carries. We move now to, uh, item G one. This is the third reading of ordinance ten forty eight dash twenty four. Uh, council, uh, staff is requesting that we also, we continue this to a date certain of January thirteenth, twenty twenty five.
I so moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, uh, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Um. Uh, item G two is moot because we're moving that. So we'll move now to, uh, new business. This is a work session regarding CPAY, CPAFY twenty twenty four dash four. This is a code text amendment, uh, commonly referred to as a buffer's development code.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council.
While you're getting ready, uh, let's see, uh, Wendy, are you on remotely?
Yes, I am.
Okay, uh, I owe you an update. Uh, I just got jammed up. Uh, it won't affect the discussion tonight, uh, but I'll be getting with you, uh, whenever I can catch up with you.
Okay.
All right. Okay.
All right, um, uh, thank you, Mayor and members of the, the council. Um, tonight's, uh, work session, uh, as the mayor has introduced, the matter is regarding what we've been referring to as the, the buffer proposed ordinance, uh, changes. Um, there's quite a bit of information in your packet and I will, uh, maybe skip some of it because it might become very redundant and then there were a lot of pictures, um, as requested, um, at the, the last meeting regarding this matter. Um, certainly, uh, this is, um, somewhat informal. It doesn't have the, the rigid, uh, parameters that perhaps a public hearing may have. So if there are any issues you would like to address, uh, please stop me and, and we can address them, uh, as we go along, um, but I certainly would like, uh, to know your opinions on matters that you would like to address. Um, in the packet, uh, tonight, there was a, a, a clean version, meaning that the strike through, uh, was removed, as well as the strike through, as you saw at the last meeting regarding this matter. Um, a, a PowerPoint presentation, which everybody here, uh, will, will see as we go through it, um, as well as, um, a survey that was done in twenty twenty regarding the, the green belt and, and perceptions that, um, individuals, uh, provided to us at that point in time. Um, tonight I'd like to go just really quickly through some examples of what measures are included to try to address, uh, buffering, um, as, and then the, as well as looking at maybe green belt, uh, there was a question in, in testimony regarding mixed use and green belt fencing. Um, and then I think the most of the concern, uh, that I hear or understand is what's the appropriate zones, zoning districts within Garden City. Um, as noted last time, um, but to just reiterate again tonight, should the city council want to introduce a new zoning district that will not zone anybody's property in that action? There would be a subsequent and further action to actively rezone, um, potentially actively rezone properties. And that's not to say that some of the existing, uh, zoning districts don't have tweaks within this proposed change and that would affect existing properties. But should the council move forward with the idea of an R three L or a lower density R three zoning district, that would create the, the quote unquote tool within the toolbox, but not apply it to anybody's property at this point in time. With that, I'll, I'll start the presentation. Um, one, one idea that's employed for buffering, uh, properties is vegetation screening. And so in this example, and just a Google, Google image, you can see that these units here can't see into these units because of the placement of trees and the vegetation. Um, this is one example that some of you might recognize and that, that was an application that came to the city that utilized structures. Um, you can also see that they're utilizing the vegetation and in this proposal, both the vegetation and the structures, um, create an impediment to see on neighboring properties. And I might also note that this, um, uh, also demonstrates setbacks and how setbacks can utilize, be utilized, uh, for buffering. Um, one other item that this code does, uh, speak to or the proposal is making sure that living space screening or location, uh, could make sense. And so, for example, having balconies or living spaces directly adjacent to, uh, lower height, uh, residential, uh, may not be the best as training that, just flipping it and turning it interior to a development. Or there's also ways to screen living areas if they are adjacent to, uh, neighboring properties. Um, another method that we've seen at the city that, uh, some architects will, um, propose is either window placement. So windows that are up too high to look out of unless you're really trying or opaque windows. And so that can still let light come into a structure, still provide, um, the, the windows on a structure, but make it difficult, uh, to, uh, still provide the privacy on the, either within the structure or for the neighboring, um, uh, properties. Um, code already speaks to light trespass for parking areas, um, but then there's another provision, uh, discussing light trespass just from the structure itself. And then, um, regarding the testimony, we heard, um, previously, there was a question about the location of fencing and, uh, adjacent to the green belt or nature path. Um, these images are taken, um, from, uh, the survey that was done in twenty twenty. And again, you have the full survey in your packet or those who are interested tonight, you can go online and see the full packet with the survey. Um, the top two pictures were, were really considered something that people, uh, wanted to see near perfect. This appeals to me responses. Um, and this bottom area, uh, people started feeling that it was too congested. Um, and there's a congestion, um, consideration on this picture as well. Um, just as an anecdote, uh, people responded not liking, uh, the different type of texture because it can catch bicycle tires. Um, but a takeaway from work that the city did back in twenty twenty, um, was that those who responded in the survey, um, tended towards wanting to have that green belt feel a little bit more open, um, and not have tall fencing that can also create a safety hazard if somebody falls off their bike directly into the fence. But allowing that to be, um, more open like this or lower, so the green belt still feels open and inviting. And again, based on that, uh, work, um, adjacent to the green belt, it's proposed that if a structure is fronting on the, the green belt, that there be a fifteen foot setback. Um, or if it is facing away and the rear is adjacent to the green belt, that there be a thirty foot rear side setback. Um, fences, um, within five to fifteen feet are proposed to be a max height of three and a half feet. And that three and a half feet, uh, corresponds what fences in people's front yards or street side yards and the, the clear triangle, clear vision triangle currently are allowed to be. Again, so very similar to what's allowed, um, within your front yard or people's front yards. And then fences that are, um, more standard six foot would be fifteen foot, uh, or mat, one more setback. Um, there, it should be noted that there's also another setback that is currently, um, adjacent to the river and that there's a seventy foot setback. And so in instances, there might be instances where that seventy foot supersedes what's allowed here. And there might be instances where this would supersede that as well. It just depends on how close things are to the river. Um, we did hear testimony not understanding or having questions about, uh, the provision of the required mixed use. Um, this is just a copy paste of what's currently proposed. And that would be that there is a requirement of mix of uses in a development in the mixed use, uh, residential district or the C two, uh, district. And those circumstances would be when a development contains more than fifty dwelling units with a density of greater than twenty dwelling units, that thirty percent of the square footage, uh, would need to be dedicated to non-residential. Um, not including the components of residential such as, uh, parking or private open space. So somebody's balcony, for example, the private open space. Um, it would also be required, um, for developments, so non-residential developments with a hundred and twenty thousand gross square feet or more, that at least ten percent of the square footage of the structure, not the entire site, um, be dedicated to dwellings. Um, there is kind of a get out of jail free card provision, uh, that's also proposed because that could be difficult for certain, um, uh, developments. And that is that they would, if, if somebody's proposal, uh, could not meet that, they could apply to the city for a conditional use permit. Um, the idea there is, uh, your design review consultants really wanted to ensure if an area is mixed use, that it be maintained as a mixed use, not go all the way commercial or all the way residential. And so that was the reasoning for the criteria there. Um, also noting, there may be instances where it may be very difficult and appropriate not to have that mix of use and therefore the conditional use permit. And then the appropriate residential zoning. And then I, I, I do apologize for the number of photos. I'll try to go somewhat quickly as we start going through this. Um, there is a question of what forty five feet in height looks like. Um, in general, that looks like three stories. And so staff did not verify the exact height on these, but in general, this is what, uh, forty five feet in height might look like. So three story homes, um, attached, detached. Um, you never know, this could be multifamily, uh, so, um, generally speaking, three story, either attached or detached. And then in particular, um, I think there's a lot of, uh, interest of what currently is zoned R three within the city. These are the properties that are west of Glenwood. Here you can see Glenwood right here with the river and then the city's boundaries. And then these are the properties that are east of Glenwood. Here you can see the river. This is Glenwood, so slightly reoriented from the other, uh, picture. And then this is Chindon. And those are the properties, um, in their zoning designations. And just a term for everybody to know dwelling units per acre, uh, different jurisdictions may call it slightly different things. But it essentially, that's just a calculation of how many units per acre are on a, a property that's commonly used in zoning. Um, it to measure the density of residential units. And so there are a lot of different, uh, uh, things that staff looked at, um, and AI was one of those. What, what does ten dwelling units or fewer per acre look like? And AI says it looks like single family, uh, detached or semi-detached homes on, on larger, um, lots that are three thousand to five thousand square feet. Uh, for anybody that was following the city of Boise's, uh, zoning ordinance work, uh, this is a slide that we borrowed from them talking about different types of housing. And so these are different types of housing that may be, um, appropriate in that lower density, um, including, up to including attached, um, or ADUs on properties. This was a fun little tool for a planner to, to utilize. There's a website at J H P Architecture and Urban Design that you put in your desired density and it tells you what kind of housing, uh, would be appropriate. And they say at twenty units per acre, single family clustered housing is appropriate. And then the, there are a number of, uh, photos, uh, that correspond to what would be allowed. Um, kind of in that range, we, we have examples that are not in Garden City, not in Idaho, as well as in Garden City specifically. And so this is what, uh, six dwelling units per acre would look like. Roughly eight dwelling units per acre. Nine dwelling units per acre, and it should be noted at this nine, this particular application has a lot of, uh, three, uh, stories. Um, and then we go on to twenty units per acre and which AI says is usually achieved, um, uh, through, uh, townhomes. And the city of Boise would say the exact same type of housing would be appropriate in, in their work. In that J H P Architecture and Urban Design notes garden apartments in cluster or manor homes might be, um, a style to use. Uh, this is an example of twelve dwellings per acre within Garden City. Um, as is the waterfront district in Garden City. Alpine Landings in Garden City has about fifteen units per acre. And then the, the original Parkway Station, uh, development has about fourteen units per acre. Flourish has about fifteen units per acre. And then we can get into some others. I apologize that, uh, those that didn't review the packet ahead of time, these pictures might be pretty small. Um, Carolyn Circle in Garden City is about fifteen units per acre. Mod Court sixteen. The Carlton Bay Town Homes are about sixteen and a half in Garden City. Blue Heron is about seventeen units. Proposed Chandler's is about eighteen units per acre. The Strawberry Glen Apartments are, uh, it's around eighteen units per acre, um, with their sister apartments, the River Point Apartments being at twenty two point five. Um, should be noted, that's in a different zoning district as well. The second Parkway Station is at nineteen units per acre in a town, two-story townhome development type. And before I move on, there's wide variety of housing, uh, that you saw there and probably a, a, a variety of how that appealed, uh, to individuals. And, um, in reviewing the, the documentation about densities and, and dealing with densities, a key takeaway is really the architectural design versus the density. And so if you can have those pedestrian features, if you can have the greensapes, if you can address the street, that tends to be more appealing to people than if those architectural features are not required. And then we move on to, um, what AI says about thirty five dwelling units per acre. And, um, AI says that it can be single family detached homes and townhomes, uh, a mix and still achieve that thirty five unit per acres. But you start seeing different types of styles of housing where you could have courtyard apartments or triplexes or fourplexes or midrises that start getting into that mix. Um, J H P says, um, suburban village clusters might be an appropriate housing type. Bridgetown Homes in Garden City is at twenty two units per acre. Um, Village Oak is at twenty three units per acre. Uh, Bridgetown Homes number two is at twenty four units per acre. Again, these are single family attached units for those of you who aren't overly familiar with what we're showing. The waterfront condos are at twenty four units per acre. Um, in, uh, outside of Idaho, this is what twenty eight units per acre might look like. Thirty three units per acre, uh, you might start seeing things get, uh, taller. I also want to, to back up a little bit. Another thing that you might see is you can he, hit height requirements, um, and go denser. You usually just have smaller units. And so there is something to consider there as well is how big the units are, might require taller or more, a more massing that you see, whereas smaller, uh, units, you might have two or three stories. Um, where, whereas the same number of units, if they're larger units, might need to go four or five stories in the same area. And then I don't think we're talking about much higher densities at all, uh, tonight, but just for visuals for those that are interested as you start getting into higher densities. Um, you start losing some of those single family detached abilities to, to reach the, the desired density. Um, and you start seeing things go higher, maybe have, um, a garage under parking more. But this is an example where in Seattle, there are nine single family detached units at three stories and you can still achieve thirty six units per acre. Um, and this is what thirty eight units per acre, uh, looks like in San Diego and a development in San Diego. And again, I don't think anybody's talking about necessarily this type of density, um, tonight as we start getting into the higher, it's just so that people can understand what that might look like. And, uh, Garden City actually has a lot higher density in some of the developments, but this is one on Adam Street that's at forty units per acre. And then with this, I'm just going to start scrolling. Everybody can see at forty nine, fifty five, um, units per acre. Still, we're only seeing, um, not that high in this particular application. Fifty eight units per acre, sixty, um, sixty units per acre. And with that, I, uh, stand for any questions. Um, I look forward to any direction of issues that you would like to address specifically. Can I turn the floor back over to you? Thank you.
Thank you. Any initial questions or thoughts or certifications or, you know, we got a ways to go on this, so.
I'll jump in, Mr. Mayor, with a quick question. Um, so thank you for all those illustrations and images. That's helpful. Um, uh, just for the sake of discussion, let's say, um, dwelling units per acre in our code is, is fifteen. Okay. And then somebody comes in and submits an application on a four acre parcel. And again, I'm just making this up. And some of the development in that application is twenty eight dwelling units per acre. Obviously to get, would it be okay? Is the twenty eight going to be okay as long as they compensate and end up at fifteen for the whole development? Or is the twenty eight, are we saying that the twenty eight would not be good?
Um, that's a great question. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Rasmussen. Um, the way that we review densities in Garden City is that not every unit has to meet that density. And so that Alpine Landing is a really good example of where the majority of the units are at two stories and, um, probably a much, uh, lower density than the middle blocks, which are at three stories.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So it's a gross. So it's a gross density.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, for putting that succinctly. Thank you.
Uh, maybe just to kind of help move this along, are there uh, things you particularly like about? Uh, let's, let's look at the um, height. I'm looking at the tallest member of the city council itself. No other reason. Uh, uh, part of the comparison is R three as it exists today. And R three as it existed in twenty fifteen. So uh, at a time in the past, there was a forty-five foot height maximum in an R three zone. Uh, that's not the case today. So if you're looking at a R three L, we were to create uh, an R three L zone. Would maximum height be something that would be the council would like to see? So just kind of throwing something out uh, to kick around. The fact that it was forty-five feet at one time in the past, uh, doesn't mean it has to revert back, doesn't mean there, there has to be one, right? Currently, there isn't a height restriction in an R three zone. So um, it's an issue that Councilmember Jacob has brought up in the past, uh, in certain areas of the city. Uh, I know Bill, you are interested in considering a height restriction. So, so that's why I just, I thought I'd throw that out.
My apologies. I might clarify, um, potential. Right now, the way that it's drafted is the R three would revert back to forty-five feet. And then as penciled in for the R three L, it would be thirty-five feet. So actually ten feet lower than, than what was shown at forty-five feet in the presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. The point is, uh, this is a work session. We're not writing code tonight. We're just kicking around some ideas. So what's, what are your thoughts about height? Uh, maximums in general.
I guess I'll address that. Um, so I think for me, it's it's neighborhood appropriate, I guess, is how I look at it. So I think, for instance, the area west of Glenwood, which is kind of where this all came up. Um, and so those are all single family homes and things like that. I think uh, a height restriction of thirty-five feet would be appropriate because of all the surrounding neighborhood. And I think that's similar to what we do did on the the River Club, right? We did that development where those back cap of those things were thirty-five feet because they did not intrude on the neighboring uh, homes down there on what Oak, Oak Cap that I think it was. So I think, but then other parts of the city, it might be truly appropriate to have higher. And so I think when we look at this, a lot of it is, you know, where is you know, where is this R three L gonna go, right? And so, um, so that's kind of my feeling. It depends on kind of the surrounding neighborhood and that goes to kind of the comprehensive plan, which states we, we want development to conform and, and blend in with, with the surrounding, with the surrounding neighborhood. And so I don't know, for me, I try to think of things in more of a simplistic way. So I don't know if we have kind of like a base code and then say, okay, we're within these boundaries. We're gonna have a thirty-five foot height limit. But in, in this other part, maybe now Forty Second Street, we have something that's could be higher than forty-five feet depending, because we want more density in certain parts of the city. And I think Mrs. Ball had mentioned that. It's like, you know, we don't, one size fits all, doesn't really work within the city. So I kind of look at it and it's kind of, for lack of a better word, of a design district, and a district might be west of Glenwood. Okay, we want that at thirty-five feet. But in another part of the city, we want more density. We can have higher, higher uh, height. I did have a question on the buffers though. So I like the trees in the line of sight. The question I had is because this, what I do is, do we require a certain caliper tree, right? Because you put in a fire maple and it's two-inch caliper, it's a twelve-foot tree, right? And it's gonna take X amount of years to get the height to actually grow those stories. But a four-inch caliper tree is more than, it's not just double. So about a hundred dollar two-inch caliper tree. A four-inch caliper tree is gonna probably be a thousand dollars, right? It's, it's, it's not. And an evergreen grows too slow. So I guess one question on, on how do you mitigate that? I would imagine probably people who live behind Strawberry Glen appreciate the, often appreciate the, but I imagine in the winter, it's probably not the same as it is in the summer. And it takes X amount of time for those trees to grow. So I don't know if we require a, a variety that just grows faster. So I don't know if you put that in code.
Bill, I have a question about that. Um, just given your expertise. Is, is it a maxim of truth that a faster growing tree is also a less hardy tree? And a more susceptible to things like wind, uh, that root system is underdeveloped?
Uh, I think if you have like a, like a popular or something like that, yeah, they, they tend to not live very long and they can blow over. But like maples are pretty hardy trees and they grow pretty fast. You know, and, and so I, I think you would just try to find like a maple tree or an oak tree that grows pretty fast. You wouldn't want to put a peacock in there because they grow two inches a year. You want something that grows two feet a year, for instance. Um, and so we might want to just something to consider is, you know, I, I'd have to talk to people at the nursery to see which ones that they, they would recommend. But we might want to consider in the code. It's like, okay, if we're gonna have these buffers, we need to have it be a, a variety that grows faster and is hardy.
And I think maybe to dovetail off that. So if, if the caliper is, in the example you used, two inches versus four inches, the spacing is different than two, correct?
Right. Well, you're gonna have to have the same, you know, the, the two-inch is gonna grow in the four-inch, right? So you're, you're gonna wanna space them for full maturity.
Okay, so the spacing would be the same.
Yeah, you, because you wanna, you wanna, you want them to grow at full maturity. You know, you kind of want them to blend together, but you know, but uh, but a four-inch caliper tree is a big, it's expensive. So you know, you want to be sensitive to the developer, right? Requiring a bunch of trees that are five, you know, a lot, it's a lot more expensive as you call it in caliber.
Yep. Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Mayor, um, uh, I guess if, if Bill is the height czar, which I think is undisputed. Um, I think I've been just as excited on the other side of the, of the teeter totter to not have height restrictions. And I just, I wanted to um, say that I've been considering this, uh, this idea of uh, height restrictions uh, to, to the areas west of Glenwood and, and not having height restrictions um, to the east of Glenwood. And that idea is, uh, it's really growing on me. Um, I never thought I would say that, but I, um, I see a lot of value to that. There's a a number of properties um, west of Glenwood that uh, that are more than one acre, single family homes. Um, and, and I think as, as uh, those properties change hands and, and develop, um, I think it would um, smack against the character of the neighborhoods that are established to have, uh, you know, a thirty-five, forty um, Duba type establishment in, in an area that's already established. Whereas on the east, the east part of Glenwood, we, we have tall buildings and we have um, examples that we just saw in the slideshow of much more dense properties. And so that, that I think would be more in tune to what um, residents are, are expecting. It matches the neighborhood and it's less um, shocking to see something like that. So there's my retraction, Bill.
Yay. Well, and I, you know, kind of my point about looking at the city, you know, we may look at the riverside and include that in there or, you know, Lakeland Village or Plantation as well, you know, where are those light characters? And if we wanted to, you know, and make a height restriction on that. And then the main core is the city. I fully agree. We may, you know, I, I'm the height isn't, um, I think you need the heights, right? Because you, you, you need that density.
I do also agree that the east part of Glenwood on the north side of the river uh, is more um, characterized as, as what we would consider west of Glenwood.
Right. Well, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Director Thorne, Thornborough. I would like to look at the maps a little bit more closely. Um, bear with me if you will. If, if um, if you envision Garden City developing out and, and, and what I in my mind is going to likely be, and I could be totally wrong, so don't anybody run to the press and say the council thinks Garden City is going in, in a different direction. But if what is currently the fairgrounds is developed out, it, it, it is easy for me to envision a development on the west side of Glen, Glenwood and uh, Shandon. I, I fully expect that's gonna be redeveloped one way or another. And
Down at the corner, you mean?
Hmm, yeah. And so, yeah.
For the shopping, for the commercial development.
Yeah. And, and in my world, if the fairgrounds is redeveloped, I would love to see a, a high-end hotel going potentially, or something that attracts money. People that come in and spend money and leave. It's very easy for me to envision that that will require height. And the reason it would require height is because they'd need parking. So as that begins to develop and spread a little bit, what, what are the boundaries? And where do we, where would it make sense? And of course, we have a very large open field that I also expect will be high-density housing, if not commercial, right? So how does that all play? How do, how do we map that out so that it, we want to create a buffer, we want to create an ease from, i- in my world, I'd like to see an allowance where it's reasonable that Garden City becomes attractive for desirable business, but also protects property. And, and I also want to say that, uh, I would like to avoid the appearance that this is, you know, specific neighborhoods protecting ourselves because that is not
Mayor, Councilmember Jorgensen, I think we could have a whole work session on that uh, question in and of itself. Um, the safe answer for me is to, to go back to the comp plan and say what we have adopted within the comp plan. Um, we do have higher density areas, mixed juice areas and nodes. Um, one thing to note as this, this draft has gone through the, the process. Um, in its initial phases, there were discussions about requiring certain zones or requiring buffers between zones. Um, uh, those who have reviewed this prior to you threw that concept out because um, the, the zones that have the current zone now to have an art, not an artificial, but an additional um, buffering or maybe a height restriction um, because of where they're located. Uh, they felt that that was a hard, a hard thing to deal with. Um, not, not hard and that it's hard for the city, but for those that own that, own the properties and those that are adjacent to the properties. Um, not that everybody looks at this when they buy a property, but they came knowing that they were adjacent to, say, a commercial district. Um, not, and not saying that that's um, a, a great pill to swallow if you're adjacent to those and they maybe come in with a, a higher density, but that is the reason uh, that those that reviewed it prior to it coming here through that idea of buffering within, across all zones between zoning districts. Uh, didn't embed itself more. Um, did that?
Yeah, can you give me, um, and I hate, sorry to do this, but I'm somewhat visual. So take me to, um, where's the lift station at the end of?
Sit down here.
Yeah.
Um, Ruby Lift Station.
Yes.
Uh, it's on Garrett. The line isn't here.
So then do you know where I'm talking, okay?
Generally.
So let's say, right where that dead ends right now, some developer comes in and says, hey, I want to do some high-density development. How would that look? Because it would in fact be pretty darn close to a lot of residential, single-family, single-level family homes.
Um, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Jorgensen, I think I might need a little help with knowing exactly where Ruby Lift Station is. Is it clear over at the far end of the city?
Uh, Ms. Thornborough, I believe it's the property commonly known as the Smith Property.
Okay, it's right here.
Right.
Yeah. Um, what we have going on there, let's say this did redevelop, is you have four different zones. Uh, and, and thank you, Council President Page for that assistance. I appreciate it. Um, and so if this were to come in, you do, you do have different zones. And what we don't have here is a zoning designation identified. And so they would need to come in with an annexation request and they would have to ask for a zoning designation at that point in time. Um, the comprehensive plan uh, calls that out as a, as something needing a specific plan. Uh, calls it out as being a little bit special, but it doesn't say it needs to be the zoning designation. And so as that would come in with the annexation, it would have its proposal. Um, I would think that at that point in time, the, the city council could ask uh, that there be a development agreement or something uh, to address the adjacent neighborhoods. You have R two zoning district, the R one A, so one acre lot or more zoning district, R three, and then the C two commercial zones uh, that bought that property. And so it could look like a lot of different things, I guess, at the end of the day.
So, and
Thank you.
And to clarify or maybe to help my understanding, so I think Councilmember Jorgensen, I think the area you were talking about was to the west of Glenwood at Chenden, where that shopping center is.
Different areas. We, we, as we contemplate this, we know some very specific areas.
Right.
Right. But I think we have to back up and, I mean, we're responsible for the entire city. And, and as we start talking about large chunks of the city, we have to open up that scope and look at what, what is um, not only there currently, but what would we, what would we like to see as a, as a council? And, and what would we be soliciting as far as development if we were as a city?
So, um, so to play that out, um, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that area at least. So we've been saying west of Glenwood would have a height limit, but only, only in R three and R three L, because west of Glenwood on Glenwood is C two with no height limit. Okay.
Mayor, Councilmember Rasmussen, that is correct. This kind of pink
Yeah.
color is C two. Um, the kind of purply color is mixed juice. And then um, the, the darker the yellow, the, then more intensive of the, the residential. So the light yellow is R two with the more mustardy color being the R three areas.
And, and we see similar zoning patterns along State Street.
Yeah.
Um, to the north.
Yes. So, Ms. Thornborough, so kind of on that conversation, because Teresa brings up a really good point. So that area by Joplin, right? You'd, you'd say at the point, at the time, if they requested to be annexed, they'd need a, you know, a plan. You develop, we could maybe mandate that they have a buffer or whatever between that and it. Would the same apply for that strip then that ITD owns, that they would have to, if we're gonna annex that, that we would have, we could require some type of buffering between that and the adjacent neighborhood directly next to the ITD property? So then, in her example of that, that corner piece, you know, where Starbucks is, that gets redeveloped. You have the ITD property technically as a potential buffer between that and the neighborhood where heights might be more appropriate to your point. Height might be more appropriate to your point. And if it's C two, so it would. So at the time, if that gets developed, we have, I mean, at some point, I think ITD is planning to move somewhere else. We'll see, right? Who knows? But that would, it acts as a buffer now, I guess. In that instance, if it ever gets annexed, we we could make it a similar buffer.
Yeah, well, people people are used, people are used to it now.
Yeah.
Because at certain times, it's pretty noisy there.
Yeah.
You know, as when they're when they're.
But it would, it it'd be treated just like the Joplin area.
Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, that's correct. The the first step in those instances would be annexation. Um, and in the annexation, there would need to be a zoning uh designation. Um, and and you can see the the comprehensive plan down here below. Um, that identifies the the fairgrounds or Expo Idaho and ITD site kind of being a special location. It, the comp plan goes into a little bit further discussion about what um is there in that? Um, taking things into consideration, I guess, as well as this area that I'm going to refer to as the Smith property. Um, in either instances, um, of course, there are legalities with the code that the city would need to consider. Um, uh, but if the application did not adhere to the comp plan and adhere to the city's desire, the city could. Turn it down. And so I have a very strong suspicion that whoever would come in would come in with some sort of. Either specific area plan, development agreement, or something along those lines um to address it at that point in time.
Thank you.
Yeah, annexation's a completely different issue because uh the city isn't required to annex. So, uh, there's a lot of control that can be administered at that point.
I believe that goes to a vote, does it not?
No.
Valid issue?
No, the the city council has the authority to uh approve an annex- annexation request. Uh, but you're not required to. So, um. For example, uh pick an area uh to the west of our current city limits on the south side. Uh, you get an annexation request, typically the the party requesting the annexation has a. An idea of what they wanna do, and so they'd make a presentation to you. Uh, if that doesn't align with what you wanna see, then. Then you can say, uh, you know, no, we wanna see something different there. And. Uh, that, I don't wanna get down this track too far, uh, but. But it it's a it's a different circumstance. There's a lot more I could say about that, but that's, that gets us down a rabbit hole tonight. Uh, one of the things I was gonna bring up, uh, we are talking about a zone designation. We're not talking about specific properties that would be zoned. So it's important that we remember that. If we had an R three L, um, then. And that zone could be applied to a specific piece of property somewhere to achieve. Some of the goals that Teresa was talking about, or Bill's talking about, or or. Um, um, your conversion. Okay, uh, then then we'd have that on the, then we'd have that on the books uh and could utilize it. So we're talking about. If if we wanna the ability to do something different west of Glenwood than east of Glenwood. Uh, on. Uh, R three generally stated, R three uh properties. Then what would we want it to look like? And we can have a different zone than R three, which would be the R three L or what any other number we wanna put on. So, um. The, not all properties that are currently R three on the west side of Glenwood. Have the same characteristic characteristics or the same areas around them. We've got an area on Garrett. Where we've got uh apartments. There can be an R three next to that. Well, that, that might fit with R three, because there's nothing else around it, but the the. Multi-story apartment building down there. But another area uh could have a completely different characteristic, so. So when you're thinking about. Uh, any specific piece, you can pick your piece, but if we're gonna have the ability to apply. A different set of criteria to what is currently an R three zone. We're talking about what those criteria ought to be, and then we have that in the code that can be used. If we choose to make a decision on a specific piece of property, either as at the request of a a a developer. Or at the request of a neighborhood that wants to limit what is currently in the R three criteria, so. Um, but we need to, but we're, the challenge with this is, we're trying to create something and. Uh, we can see where it might be applied, but we aren't making a decision to apply it anywhere. We just wanna have the tool in our toolbox if we wanna apply it. That makes sense? So. Uh, the reason I started this conversation with height is that's a deviation from the current R three. So, uh, and and we had that that discussion, and there are places that might be appropriate for. Thirty-five feet, maybe there's a place forty-five feet appropriate, but but I think. To move the needle a little bit, are we comfortable that we could have a height restriction in a modified R three zone? And I think I'm hearing yes, yeah, go ahead.
Just one question, so. Um. And this is this, is there an easier way to do it? Um. And that would be to say, well, here's our base code, and in this area, we want thirty-five. Can you do an overlay and just say in this, I know some people don't like that word, but I didn't know if you could say, cause I I. I didn't like the live or create overlay very much, because the the developer could pick either or, right? And it's like, and so it was, and it was more about what it looked like inside and all that versus having an overlay that just says. Within these boundaries, use our base code, and we are also implementing a thirty-five foot height restriction. And, you know, maybe some lands, whatever, right? And then that's that area, and then we could. If we wanted to make an overlay down Forty Second Street and say, oh, here's our base code. And there's no height restriction, right? And and use an overlay rather than rezoning and creating R three and RL. Just map out the area that we want to protect a potential neighborhood and just put an overlay on it, say, in this area, we have a thirty-five foot height restriction.
Well, the answer is you can certainly can do overlays. That's. That that that's allowed. Uh, I think that, I think one of the challenges we have is we're trying to cut, we're trying to add a. Option in our code, uh, and you're talking about looking at a specific piece of property, and that. That's gonna bring in, uh, s- some other considerations that are gonna include. Uh, the person that owns the property and has a certain level of a property, conditional property right today. And if you're gonna change that property right. By, well, you know, I don't know, but I mean, there's there there's rules there, so uh, that's why, that's why. I'm attempting to steer us back to, do we wanna have uh an R three L zone? And if we do, what would it look like? The the that model? And. Uh, it, we have a, I was asking Jenna about this. Uh, practically speaking, we have an R twenty zone on our books, but we have. One little piece of property that's R twenty. So it's virtually just sits there. We don't use that zoning designation in any decision, three pieces, I'm sorry. So we have our hand signals over there. So, so, uh.
Well, Mr. Mayor, it seems like um maybe the first question to to address is 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 whether. We would consider um a light zone, so R three L. And I know we don't, we don't vote in work sessions, but.
Hmm, Mr. Mayor, uh, President of Council, I do have one other question. Um, that I'd like to ask Director Thornborough. Um, a- and this is really nebulous. So I apologize in advance for asking. Um. Right now, we have a lot of conditional use applications coming through. Do, would you predict? Predict with your globe, um, would this uh help reduce conditional use permits? Or do you into, I mean, you've seen some history, well, you've seen a lot of history in Garden City. Uh, and behavior of developers and applications, what what would, what are your thoughts on that?
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Jorgensen, I don't see this reducing uh conditional use applications. Um, right now, uh, because they are tied to very specific uses. Um. A- and so I I wouldn't see a reduction in that particular um. Use, what what I think the intent would be to try to establish zoning criteria. That this city then could come in and rezone potentially. And to have that criteria more closely aligned with what is in the comprehensive plan. Um, and and that would direct future uh development uh to to. Develop to what that looks like. Um, and and listening to the, this is off topic, but in listening to your conversation. The council's collective conversation, there's certainly a lot of ways of doing it. Um. I think preservation of neighborhoods is something that I'm hearing, and there could be potentially design standards. Um, that are even increased, trying to get maybe that single-family look of a home. Um, and um. There was another point in listening, oh, the the code as drafted right now is recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, has not an overlay, but does consider no height restriction in R three east of Glenwood. But west of Glenwood, and so it does not include this R three light or R three low density. Uh, that we're we're speaking about mostly right now. And one other thing I would like to note in your your very thoughtful uh discussion. Is I do want to note that there are single-family detached homes in Garden City that are three-story. As you consider um an even lower uh height restriction. Um, as as penciled in in that light version right now, I don't think that you would see a three-story. I think. The two-story is where you would max out. And again, we do have those in Garden City. My apologies for going off topic on your.
No, I appreciate all your, but valuable.
So, Mr. Mayor, um, getting back to um, you cut to the chase with the height question. Um, I didn't throw my two cents in on that. Um. Um. I've been um not in favor of a height limit at all. Um. Somewhat agreeing with Council President James Page. Um. But uh, I think as I, I've I've kind of agree with you. That I think west of Glenwood, I could be amenable to a height limit. Um, you know, that's, I guess, kind of what politics is, is compromising, right? But I mean, for fundamental reasons, I'm not, um, I'm not for a height limit. And I think um I I I want, I always want the market to be able to do what. What it wants to do, I guess. Um, and a and a height limit sort of is a constraint on the market. Um, but at the same time, I also recognize that, um, you know, west of Glenwood. Is is an area where there's a lot of interest in having a height limit. Um, so. Um. Yeah, it's not something I would be for, but I guess, again, um, I I would, I would be okay with it. The one. Um. Thing I think I want to bounce back on. Is instead of, I think, R three L in the proposal is twenty dwelling units per acre. Maybe, you know, go up to twenty-five, just again, to allow a little more flexibility. I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there. But um, just have a, to allow a little more density if we are gonna constrain height. Anyway, that would be my answer to your, to your.
Well, you, the reason I started with height and density was gonna be next on my list. Those were the two primary.
Yeah.
Uh, things that kind of came back uh to me uh as the. Uh, version that came up from planning zoning commission started sinking in, it's uh. Uh, height and density and, um. Um, so. Um. So I think, I I think, uh, I think Jenna's gotten some input on on height, and I don't know that we need to try to. Drill that down. I have a feeling we're gonna be back here uh again, as we kind of absorb what's discussed tonight. Um, um. I don't know, uh, Jenna is, um. Is there such a thing as a density range? Other than a maximum? Because, and the reason I'm asking that is because, uh. You know, properties have unique characteristics, surroundings, uh, uh, and. Uh, I think it's already come up in this discussion. Densities could be appropriate at different places, at different levels. And I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if that's something we need to research, but, um.
Um, Mayor, um, certainly, even our code has a a a range and certain um aspects. Are in certain conditions, not what we're speaking about tonight, but there are properties where it has a minimum density to a maximum. Unless there's a a conditional use for the the minimum density. Um. There could be criteria, certainly, that we could look at that would say in X, Y, or Z. Uh, situation that the the density would be less. That kind of goes to um that tiered buffering within zones. So maybe it could be when adjacent to, this is a max or a maximum height, and then outside of that, it can go taller. And we can certainly explore that. Um, a lot of the regulations really affect the density. In some regards, as as you've seen, whether it be height, uh, maximum lot coverage, et cetera. But on the other side, as we discussed earlier, um, the density can get higher. Um, in certain situations, if you make your units smaller, for example, and not any taller. But uh certainly, we can look at criteria that would trigger a lower uh density. Um, or other design criteria that might reduce the density or the feel of. The density next to adjacent uh properties, such as a lower height or other design criteria that I'm. I'm remiss for not being able to better articulate right now.
No, I I think that 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 answered it. Uh. Um, so we have a predominantly single-family west of Glenwood. Uh, but we have some. High, high-density areas as well. So that was, that's why I brought that up. Um. You know, you might have a different view next to a one-acre series of one-acre lots than you do. Adjacent to a three or four-story apartment complex, so. Um. Can everybody understand why government is messy? I mean, you know, you you have such a variety of circumstances, and you try to capture. Uh, a set of criteria. Uh, and it's almost impossible to pick up every circumstance, so. Uh, that's why codes don't often get changed. You know, you kind of live with what you have, but, um. Um. I think I'm picking up from the conversation here that there is a distinction. Between with Glenwood as a demising line on some of our residential property. between what Glenwood is a demising line on some of our residential properties. So anyway.
Mr. Mayor, I have to say that, you know, part of my hesitation, reluctance in height restrictions was based on the boardwalk. There was so much public comment. And for every comment of, we hate this, you know, it's insane to have a high rise in the middle of Garden City. There were quiet people saying, this is fantastic. I love it. Bring in new energy. I want to have some cool spots to pull off of the green belt. In this instance, I, I have to say, I am thrilled and very excited that the community has come up with what I consider a very creative approach to resolving concerns and frustrations. And, and when the citizens of the city who voted us in to make decisions for the city, we have to uphold the constitution, we have to obey the laws of the state and, and the country. But this, I, I mean, I'm just, as I said, I'm thrilled to have something brought forward that is a, a good, what I perceive as a good option potentially. If we craft this appropriately. And I do think that there is an opportunity here to solve specific issues. And the one, the one thing that I have to say is I was somewhat concerned about more or less creating a division in our city because I, I think we all agree, we love the city and we want everybody to be comfortable here. And certainly the last election, we were asked, hey, did the voters on the east side of Glenwood or the north side of the river, south, you know, was there a, a voting trend? And that really concerned me because I want to see the city operating well and cohesively regardless of, you know, geographic boundaries or whatnot. And, and I have to applaud Ms. Ball, who represented the east side of the, the, the city and acknowledged that there is, you know, a good case here. Although she's not on the council, her, you know, her opinion and leadership in the east end of the, the city spoke volumes for the willingness to, to accommodate needs throughout the city. So I'm, I'm pretty excited. I know we're not voting, but like I said, I'm excited to see creativity in, in something that was frankly brought forward from the community. So I applaud everyone and I thank everyone who's willing to show up here and represent your interest and concern for the city. And good job drafting language.
One of my motives in, in having the work session tonight was to have this kind of a discussion, just to kind of everybody can hear from everybody else. I'm wondering for next steps, we have a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that can be representative of a baseline from that we can springboard from. And again, keeping in mind that we're talking about creating a zoning designation as a tool that can be applied or not applied to, to a piece, piece of property. So and this is just a question. If we were to take another look at this and after this discussion, I think I'd be more comfortable in doing this. I didn't do it tonight and, and recommending that we take a deeper dive into the planning and zoning recommendation. And and use that as a baseline and see and really where we are if we want to modify something there. I had a little more of a I had some uncertainty on whether we could drill this down to just height and density. But I'm less confident of that after this discussion. Might be, buy me more to it. So this is the question. I think I've heard a lot tonight. And you know, I've had a, for those in the audience, I've had a meeting with Wendy Carver Herbert, who represents some of you, I'm not sure how many, talking about, you know, how this, how this could work. And our conversation kind of drilled down more to these two areas of height and density. But there's, there are a lot more components that might be as or more important than, than those simplistic particular attributes. And I think some of the slides we saw tonight where you've got, you've got a residential development and you have a residentially zoned vacant parcel next to it that, that has a higher density zone designation and setbacks, distance buffers. You know, you can't plant forty-foot tall trees. So, you know, so what's the trade-off for eventually? You know, and that might depend on how old you are. You know, whether you live long enough to see the thing work or not. But, but, but some of those, those pieces that maybe we haven't really touched on, other than what we saw on the slides, might be equally as important. You know, to consider. Some properties are going to have room to do quite a bit and have a lot of latitude on the site. And some properties are, are going to be constrained. And we don't have that. And I haven't gotten into some of the service requirements that there's going to be some natural impediments to density because of utility capacity. So.
And first responders.
You know, I'm, I'm, we're not going to see a, probably not going to see a high-density project off, off, off of Garrett for a while because we're not in sewer capacity there in a lift station. Just, just to bring that up. We talked about Ruby a little earlier. So so what do you think about that? I don't know how else to do it, Jenna, but just, just kind of dissect that and just kind of go, go through it in, in another work session. And allow folks to come in and, and listen to our conversation. And then.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Just a brief legal point of order, just for the council to be thinking about as we go forward. One of the issues that I've heard tonight is that there'd be a height limitation maybe on one side of Glenwood, but not on the other. So then one of the legal questions is, can you have different restrictions just based on the geographic location of where it is? And, and the answer is yes, but there needs to be a legitimate reason for treating the properties or the areas differently. So when you go through this process, if you could be thinking about what would be the legitimate reason for treating properties differently?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. Part, part of that gets answered if you rezone those properties, but there are legal components to rezoning the property because the, if you have a piece of property that's zoned, you have a conditional property right. And the conditions are the criteria that's designated in the zoning code. So, so if you're going to change that, does that create liability on the city or not? I mean, we, we've got some of that kind of research to do, but so what I think we'll do, and I apologize to the audience, this may take a, a while to kind of sort through this, but there, there's a lot of things to think about and, but I think we have a baseline with what planning zoning approved and people are going to like or dislike that. And we can, we can work at that, we can, we can look through that. But we'll have an eye, an opportunity to analyze some of these other issues. Charlie's going to look at, Mr. Wadams or City Attorney is going to look at some of the, some of the issues I just mentioned. So that can, that can kind of help us too. So why don't we do this again at our next council meeting? Everybody okay with that?
Yep, yep.
And we'll do it at the end of the meeting again, so we don't get time constrained. Okay. Okay, with that, that concludes the business on our agenda tonight and entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so moved.
Now I've got to visit with Wendy first. Now we're going to have a meeting, Wendy and I. Okay, got a motion second, all in favor?